Yeah, I'm ready.
Hello, everybody. Let's start with a flag salute, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hello, everybody. Welcome. It's Tuesday, March twenty seven, twenty six. It's five P M. And this is the monthly meeting of the planning board here in Sag Harbor. And we have the full, the full committee here, the board. Did you folks have a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
And each motion to approve a minute?
So moved.
Thank you, Grunya. Second by Ron. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have a miss? Number three public hearing on the agenda is the Sag Harbor Yacht Club, forty two Bay Street. Oh, Tiffany's here. Good. This is a public hearing. It's a continuation of the public hearing which started last month and we continued through to this month for some more information that was to be submitted. Come on up, Tiffany. How are you?
Tiffany Scolotto, forty five Division Street, could be applicant. I did submit a letter to you when for Ry, he'd sit down with me and just give the board into the yacht club and talk about what their plans were for the property. And what I can tell you is that in looking at the plans, we noticed that the plans themselves, excuse me for just running up the stairs, completely ashen, but the plans themselves seek safe proposal for services to be rendered.
Yep.
So understand that those were not submitted with the direct knowledge of the board. So I think I had had a brief sort of email exchange with Kathy about the idea of possibly removing those plans from the file. The site plan that sits in the file right now, the site plan survey is still adequate. They had no intention of changing the footprint of the property or anything like that, but plans, I think, are pretty inaccurate as far as a description of what they actually want to utilize the property for.
Okay, so you, you are withdrawing those plans?
Those first set of plans that was submitted.
Okay.
I say they were quite, it was quite a while ago.
Okay, but the site plan you're saying is still appropriate.
Yes, there's no intention to change, to change the footprint, and I'll just say that those plans aren't accurate in that one of the main goals of this exercise is they want to be able to house their staff. So and that residential component was not at, at all a part of those plans. The residential component is in fact probably the most important part of the project as they don't have any place to house their employees. So the idea being that it's a, it's a residence, it complies with all residential standards, but they're also looking for a place for offices and meeting space. In addition to being able to, being able to house their employees on site.
Yeah.
And have adequate work.
Do you want, is that something you can pull up and put on the screen? I think that's something we, that has to be on that screen, is the one closer to the audience. Is that correct? So if the board members want to see it, I have to turn the screen a bit. Is that, is that correct, Doris?
Yeah. We have, we have three screens to work off.
See what we're gonna have.
Where am I?
I think it only goes on that one.
Yeah, I had to turn zoom on one screen. Alright, so unfortunately, it's only on that screen.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm gonna turn the screen.
Here.
Just, just a little.
Okay.
So I had a question on the seating side as well.
Okay. I had to turn a little bit so more members can see it as well, hopefully everyone can see it somewhat. Okay. We're talking about that, so you can't see it.
As I said, I, if I could continue, but I think that the application itself went a little bit off course initially, and I think it was presented to this board as a, and I think it was interpreted as a clubhouse and came in with a strange proposal for plans that had a bar on it, all of that. We're backing that up because that's not, that was not the intention at all of this project. Wasn't the intention from the very beginning. So at this point, like I said, we try to back that all up and go forward in the correct way with what the, with what they actually want to do, which is retain the residential use of office space and meeting room space.
Okay.
It's not a clubhouse.
Okay. Is, is this, this is, is there a pool there now, for example?
There is a swimming pool there now.
Okay, okay. And those structures exist already?
Those structures all exist, and the idea was to do this within the original footprint, and that would be with one standard kitchen. They would operate as a family while the residents there. It would meet the definition of family under the code. They'd operate as a family. They would not have separate facilities or anything like that. It's all would be one, retain, retain the single family residence character.
So that, that's the purpose of the kitchen is for the family to provide themselves. And the parking?
The parking would be for the office and meeting spaces.
Okay.
And as I said, it is parking in an area where parking is at a jerk for some reason or another. I have my theories as to why it may be, but there is a serious, there's a parking issue down there for sure during the summer, and this wouldn't allow a lot of the people that utilize both the yacht club and Maycroft would be able to park there for longer periods of time. I know there's been parking issues surrounding use of the, use of, I'll just say any of the Marina facilities in the village as far as timing is concerned, whether it's a two hour time limit or a six hour time limit sometimes. If you're on boat, it does not need that. And so I think the idea was, then as well, they would be able to provide adequate parking. That would take a lot of the street. Turn it off of the street at this point.
The letter you sent to us this, this week, it's a, it's a paragraph or so. Is that, is that, is that the description of the project?
Fairly.
The newer?
A, a, as, yeah, as, as much as I could put it into words after having sat with them and gone over the plans that were submitted, most of them honestly have not even seen those plans.
Okay.
So it was an interesting conversation.
And, and so we have the site plan for review, but the interior of the house, because it's remaining residential, would just be the purview of the building inspector? Because it's another change of use.
Well, there will be some changes because we need to make things ADA accessible and, and do some work to the interior of the house. So the interior would change.
So those plans would get submitted separately?
Well, they would be submitted to your, to this board prior under that use as a fraternal organization. But as I said, our primary goal is to keep the housing component of the property residential.
I'm sorry, did you say you're still intended to designate a paternal organization?
We would like to. There isn't any limit on the number of uses on a residential property in the village, and so we just like a portion of the property to be designated as such. The remainder we keep as single, in the character of a single family residence.
Okay. So and paternal organization is a special exception?
Yes, that's a special exception use. And this, again, would just be for meeting rooms and office space and housing for the staff. And, and as I had said in my letter, I think there's some dry storage for historical, to maintain some historical documents and other things that they have there, some of the maintenance, quality control for that purpose.
Okay, so this is a significant alter, a very change from what was, what we thought was the presentation prior.
Yeah.
The submission prior. Okay. So this is the pre-submission conference, public hearing. Do you folks have any, any questions offhand?
I just want to go back to the parking. So are we saying the parking is going to be open to the public? Parking, or is it going to have to be permitted, or how are they going to control?
It would be private parking. It's private property, so it would remain private parking.
Okay, because you were talking about the, the issue with parking.
Well, there is, there is some parking, there are some parking issues on, on, in that area of Bay Street and Burke Street. Some of it, I think, stems from the fact that the village had not previously enforced, I think it's some overnight parking regulation. That's come up recently at a couple of different things that I've been at. And so their idea was to make sure they had parking on site that could be used for extended periods of time, obviously for people who they know who they are, and not just members of the general public, that would be a liability, but that would sort of get them around a lot of those regulations that are, that we're all dealing with as far as parking is concerned.
Yeah, so whoever parks doesn't have to be registered, right? It's the flag that have to be registered, probably members of the club or the yacht club.
Exactly, exactly. And as I said, that would address some parking issues down there as well, which I think is a benefit to the village. And they did want, just to be clear, the proposal, and it remains this way, that it would be grasspark. Drainage as appropriate, but it would be grass.
And so you're not proposing, I guess the use would not be for special events and, and so forth?
They do have a couple of events, but they would be subject to the same special event permits that every other residential.
And I assume there would be a parking spot or two for accessibility?
There are two handicap spaces right in front. They're both marked H C fourteen and fifteen on there already. I mean, we may have to rejig things a little bit. We haven't looked at this in a very long time, but for basic purposes, the, the handicap spaces, and I, as I said, we'd have to make it accessible, bathrooms accessible, things like that. So that would also be important.
Right, and just for my clarity, under this, under the application today, we, well, we need a revision for this special exemption on the paternal order, or does this application cover that? I'm a little unclear. This application for the special exemption on paternal.
Well, they haven't made an application yet, but this is a pre-submission application, so it's to, so the.
We would be submit with everything.
Yeah, so.
So once we do the submission, that'll include the.
Exactly.
That's right.
Alright.
That would be everything.
And in part. The pre-submission report, the pre-submission report from the board, once they are in the public, then your planner will write a pre-submission report, and then you'll go through the report and see, and if there's any special exception standards she doesn't need, she has to get a variance for those.
Okay.
Is that what your question was? Though I'm not sure what your question was.
Yeah, it's just the first time I've heard anything about this special exemption for paternal. I thought we were talking about.
Special exception permit is required in R twenty for, for that, for use for eternal philanthropic organizational, like meeting room or office space.
Yep.
And that's a permitted use, but it's just by special property.
Right, right.
You have to meet the standards of the special permit to get it.
Right, I just wanted to make sure the application is going to have all of that.
They have to submit a petition showing that they meet those standards, so they submit their application.
Okay, right, absolutely, right. Kathy, do you, do you have, I know there's not a lot to work with, there's no visuals to work with, but are you finding, are you hearing things that you can work with in order to write up a report?
Yes, definitely, and give some guidance on what would need to be included and then updated submission.
Okay, okay. Other questions from the board? I'd like to open to the public if, if, is there anyone in the audience tonight that wants to speak on this particular issue or anyone online? I don't know if anyone is watching online and wants to speak to this.
No hands.
No hands? No hands here either? Liz, are you good, are you good with where we're at?
Yeah.
You have no questions?
I have no questions.
Okay, fine. Then, in that case, I think we could close the public hearing if, unless you have other ideas.
No.
A second.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
So.
With a ten day written comment period.
Right, thank you for reminding me. Right, right, okay. What else we didn't do with the application at this point? This is, this is.
Both pre-submission, it ends with a ten day written comment period. The board has hopefully now sixty days to read, to adopt the report. Kathy will prepare a report for the board to review at a public meeting, go through that for the floor, make sure you agree with all of it, make sure it's your report.
Right.
You would adopt the report, it would be issued to the applicant, and I think has two years to submit a site plan application.
Right, thank you for reminding me about the sixty days. If, if we can get it done earlier, we will. I know, I know that, I know the sixty days is that was a change in code that was a necessity for us to, to do at the village level because here at the planning board, holidays got in the way, Thanksgiving got in the way, Christmas got in the way, and New Year's got in the way. But you need the thirty days, and then sixty days makes it safe for us. But if we can do it earlier than that, we will, Tiffany. So so there we are. Okay. Do I need a motion to table this here?
You, you closed the public hearing.
Fair enough. Okay, and let's work, let's move on to the work sections. Work number one, eleven Bridge Street, which you have eleven and seven Bridge Street I got these days technically. An amended application has been submitted. This has been working on, or the E A F was, was being completed and updated, I believe.
Yep, and we coordinated for the agency review.
Right.
So now we have to wait a certain amount of time before the board can assume the agency and go through the E A F part two.
I believe the letters were sent out on the twenty second.
Yeah, right, we have thirty days for which they have the opportunity to respond and decide if they want the agency response.
Right, right. And we heard back from one agency today, I believe. I forget who it was. But that's, that's where, yeah, that was very fast. They turned and run right away.
Right.
Okay. All right. So. All right, so we have thirty days for those, those letters to come back. That's basically where we're at at this point. And then at that point, we'll come back, at next month's meeting, we'll be able to come back and, and and maybe initiate the, we'll. Right, right. Good. Any questions about where we are with that? Okay. We'll move on. Oh, thank you. Do you need a motion to table eleven Bridge Streets? Second is. By Nat, follow up in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is tabled.
For the record, the next meeting is April twenty third.
Okay, thank you. Page, Main, L L C, Page Restaurant, between Main and Street. This has, this has been in front of us for quite a while now. We have, we have been looking at the servers. So Tiffany, there's some questions we have for you on the front.
I have questions as well. Scolotto, forty five Division Street, for the applicant.
We have questions about the site plan and, and what exactly you are planning to do, what the applicant is planning to do with, with the different spaces, and what is there now? As you know, we've been, we've been in our, in our pre-submission conference report, we requested updated drawings that show more specifically how the different spaces are used and where there are tables and where there are seats and which one, you know, and so forth. And we haven't received those. And so I wanted to know, hear from you.
Happy to submit those. We had a little trouble because honestly, I, I, I think both Liz and I, counsel and I, were looking for a stipulation of settlement with regard to that page and what the situation is at that page. And in fact, it's a site plan approval, and there was a there was a case that was settled. It was a different matter regarding seating on the front. And so the site plan approval does give approval for seating at that page without table service.
For twenty fifteen, I think you're talking about.
This is for twenty thirteen. There's a two thousand and thirteen approval.
Zoning, zoning board.
Planning board.
There's a planning board, two thousand, twenty thirteen, then there's zoning board appeals, then there's a twenty fifteen planning board.
As well, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So this is, but this is for outdoor dining accessory to the restaurant in the back.
Yes.
I don't know that that was an annual approval.
Oh, I, I know. I have to, I have to see, I mean, actually, we did, we were searching for this settlement that was referenced on the record, but I couldn't find it. And then we just found the order. Obviously, this has an extensive history, this particular site, respect to back page and what's allowed to be there. I think what we really need for the board, for you to move forward, is what you're proposing there so that the board can weigh the environmental impacts of what's being proposed on the actual plan.
Right.
Not just for what you're proposing upstairs, but so they can calculate what's being proposed entirely and consider the impacts of the entire restaurant expanding, right? So that's all. We need to see on the plan, and they're blanks. There are currently blanks on the plans. And I think because it was unclear what exactly was permitted, and, and it's also a situation where it's, it's like the outdoor waiting area and back page that's permitted, it mentions high tables and chairs, so we really have to go through it with specificity to see what these plans that are referenced by these prior approvals show. If, if they show any number of seating or chairs or types of chairs back there at all, they may not. But this board needs to know what's being proposed and what they want approved in order to be to weigh those environmental impacts or potential impacts accordingly.
Right, and I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to, to put that on a plan, a plan on paper.
Even if it's not like, you know, a certain number of table chairs, but, but approved waiting area as per decision for twenty, you know what I mean?
Right.
It has to be shown so that you know what you're looking at, what the impact is.
Right, and as Liz said, I think we do have to pull the past, past planning board files. I started to look at the minutes from a couple of the meetings, and we started to talk about if you, you were able to go get food and bring it to your table, you were able to go get alcohol and bring it to your table. So I think that you're correct, and that we need a little bit more specificity and need to go back and drill down into these decisions a little bit more and find out what exactly was approved back then.
Right.
Because frankly, the description of approved work was the creation of a lawn patio area, tall tables, chairs, lighting and landscaping to allow existing customers to wait for indoor tables or takeout inside the confines of the restaurant without the benefit of table service.
Right.
So there was a site plan approval and special exception use approval issued for that area, and I think putting that on the plan and detailing exactly what that is will be very helpful.
That's right. It was amended two years later, I believe, if that's the planning board approval you're talking about.
So we just need to drill down on that and get those and have that put on the site plan for you so that you.
That would be, that's an important feature. We, we need to, we need to have a site plan that actually shows the information that we're, that we're approving.
Happy to put it on there.
Fantastic.
Once we figure out what that, like I said, I don't know that there'll be a number attached to it. It may not be. It doesn't seem like there's a number attached to this.
Right.
But I'm happy to put on there what, what is newly permitted, once we figure it out.
Right, well, I'm sure. Thank you, thank you. That's good. That's, that's very good.
And so for today, I just asked to table it until we put, until we submit those plans to you.
Very good, very good. Anyone else have questions for Tiffany or for any about the issue at all?
No, I think it's great that they're doing it to clean it up, so you know, in the future, if there was any other things, it's clear.
Yeah. Yeah, and we can vote on, on something unclear.
Yeah.
You know, it's, Liz is absolutely right about that. Thank you, Liz, for that. Okay, so she has requested that be tabled. I would maybe accept the motion to table.
So moved.
All those in favor of tabling? And I'll note that Larry is, is removing himself from this application. I should have mentioned that earlier. That's been true throughout this whole, this whole session. Thank you. We'll move on to number three, which is twenty two Long Island Avenue. Applications for proposed change of use from a liquor store to a restaurant. We have I think we're at the tail end of this particular application. Need to find the resolution. Yeah, here it is.
Findings and determination.
Do you copy?
I have, I have, I actually have, yeah. You folks, hopefully you have the findings and determination of the board, which was written up very well, by the way, by Nelson Pope and I think Eve's worked on that as well. At Nelson Pope. So she did a great job. It is it's, it's approving a, a, a change of use from a liquor store to a restaurant, and we have gone the applicant and Nelson Pope, and, and we have looked through all the issues, and it seems to be gives me all, all alignment here. Conditions for approval, the applicant is I don't know if I need to read through all this.
Usually, usually your planner outlines your resolution for you on additional approval.
Do you want to do that, Kathy? Thank you.
So this is, this is a book are to Pacific Sub County Department of Health Service require prior to building permit, the building permit, and any change in the exterior signage would be required to be reviewed by the A R B. The group plans are the floor plan as I noted by Jeff Hassan's architect, less David Chivory eighth twenty twenty four, and a group plan as well to facilitate an occupational fitness that is consistent with the waterfront, all relates with things. But the, there are conditions related to the finding of construction that is consistent with the noise ordinance for the village between eight AM and seven PM on a big for Friday, it's not public holidays. And there's some other conditions that are standard conditions. And no certificate of occupancy shall be issued for the site or for the improvements unless all the conditions are met. And the building, a building permit shall be applied for no later than twelve months from the date of this resolution. That's.
Great. Yeah. Any questions at once? About that?
No.
I'll add a motion to, to accept this determination.
So.
Thank you. Thank you, Nat. All those in favor of accepting? Adopting? Done. Thank you. You know that. I look forward to that being opened.
Yes.
Open enough. Secret number four, one thirty three Main Street. This is the Lynn Park, Carveyette property. Do we have Dennis Downs on the line?
I'm on the line.
Hello, Dennis, how are you?
Good evening.
Hello. Do you have anything to share with us tonight on this particular application?
Yeah, we filed revised site plans addressing all the questions that Kathy had posed in her last report. I can go through them with you if you need to.
I, yeah, why don't you do that? I don't, I don't have to see them in front of me at the moment.
Yeah, I can see them later.
Do you see them anymore? I, I don't think I've received, received anything, Dennis.
When did you file it?
When was it filed, Dennis?
Well over a week ago, maybe two weeks ago. The surveys, let's see, oh, good. My, I've got a PDF in front of me. It's see if I can read the date off of this. March nineteenth. It was, it was delivered by my office.
They're handled, Lord?
Yes.
Dorothy, do we have any, any?
No, the last thing I have on the file is M D's report.
Dennis, our, our director informed me that I don't seem to, we don't seem to have it in front of us here, so I don't.
Did you get the PDF?
I did not see a PDF.
You didn't see it.
I don't know if anyone else did.
Well, let, let me just walk you through it, and I'll tell you what we did. Let's see. So I'm looking at page, looks to me back page two of Kathy's report of January fourth under section three hundred dash fourteen point four C one E. She wanted location, names and existing widths of adjacent streets and curb lines. That's all shown on the survey. Where the parking stalls are along Church Street on the boulevard side. The fact that the road is a one-way road. Existing contours, which is same section, only two A. She wanted the contours at two foot or less, and that was, that's been provided. Great grading and drainage plans have been submitted. There's one dry well that will take all the roof runoff. And the volume of that dry well, as well as the roof calculations, is on the survey. What I don't have is the, well, we, we submitted this to the to the zoning board in the, in the past. It was the lighting plan. There's basically one light over the front door and one light that's existing over the side door. The front door light would be above a sign that's to be approved by the A R B. But it's all dark skies compliant, and they're all face down. Um, but it's all dark skies compliant and they all face down. And then um, there will be one new sign across the face of the uh, of uh, just above where the garage doors are now. Those doors are coming out. It's going to be glass, two windows with a recessed door.
Where the garage doors are now, is that what you said?
Yeah, the garage doors will come out and there'll be two, two plate glass windows with a recessed door. Uh, the um, eight, the the apron that's there now, which is the apron into the garage, that's going to be repaved and uh made level with the street going. It's a slight incline to get up the prop, up to about a foot, foot difference.
Yeah. Okay, okay. Um, for for the audience who don't, probably don't know what we're talking about, or maybe they know. This is, this is a property on Main Street that goes all the way back to Church Street. Um, and in the back on Church Street, there's a garage that's um, has has been a garage. But the uh, the the application is to turn that into a retail space, I think it is.
Yes.
Um, so it, that's, that's what we're talking about here. Um, and um, uh, very good, okay.
Okay, there's one other item that Kathy raised, and that had to do with the turnaround. Um, where the handicapped parking spaces. There was, the original plan was showing a parking stall um on the south boundary. And that stall has been removed and um, the parking lot has been extended for for the extra space that we needed according to the zoning board appeals. So it's, it's one, one additional parking space going towards the main building on the front of the property.
Okay. Okay, so it sounds like, thank you, thank you, Dennis. It's, it sounds like this is um, this, this is, he's answered a bunch of the questions that you had in your report. Um, the unfortunate thing is we don't have the information in front of us right now. So um, I guess probably what we need to do, we can talk about it more, but what we probably need to do is table until next month. So we have a chance to look at it and um, and digest what Dennis just told us and look at at the paperwork. Um, so that's, that's right, people?
If Doris doesn't have the information, he needs to resend it to us.
Yeah, um.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have a twelve more sets of prints delivered tomorrow and I'll, I'll uh. Uh, scan the, I'll send Doris the PDF tonight.
You just resend the PDF that you um sent March fifteen? You just have to resend it.
Can you resend that, Dennis? The the PDF that you sent on the fifteen?
Um, would have been the fifteenth. Let me just check and see. Uh, it's, it would have been earlier than the date on the survey. No, the survey's dated March nineteenth. Um, Doris, I think that the fifteenth was, that was Hoggins uh application.
Oh.
Okay, so it's two separate applications.
It's a different application.
Okay, so um, send this on and then, and then, and then we'll table until next month, if that, if that sounds right to you. And then in the meantime, we'll, we'll have an opportunity to look at it and Kathy will look at it as well.
Very good, thank you.
Good, thank you, Dennis. Any questions, folks?
Also the hard copies.
And the hard copies would be required, of course, Dennis.
Say it again?
The hard copies.
Yeah, I'll have those delivered to you tomorrow morning.
Thank you kindly. Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Motion table?
Uh, so moved.
Thank you. Thank you, Nat. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Table. Um, good. Um, moving on to discussion items, and we actually have two of them tonight. Um, there's only one listed on here. There was a sort of emergency one that we're adding on with the um, the Village Library. So we're going to start with number one, which is twenty Main Street, um, discussion item, um, which came into us earlier this week, uh, or only a couple of days ago. Um, and um, is there someone here to talk about that or someone online? Hello?
Hi.
Can you, can you state your name and and where you live, please, sir?
Sure. The name is Jeff Sharon. I reside at nineteen Robson Boulevard in Sag Harbor Village. I represent the ownership group for the laundrette located twenty Main. Um, and just to specify, um, this is the um, ownership of the business, not, not the, not the uh, the real estate and and the building. Just the business that occupies the storefront of twenty Main.
Okay, good. Um, I, we, we at the planning board received your um, your, some documents with some, some visuals.
Yes.
Do you want to talk a little bit about what, about what you want to do? It sounds like you, you're, you're floating the idea of, of moving the laundromat from its present location to a new location on the corner of Rose and Bridge Street?
Exactly. Um, I, so you, you um, have the plan in front of you, so I don't need to do a screen share. Um, I'm assuming everybody has that plan. Is that correct?
If you could do a play, a screen share, that'd be great for the people in the audience, if you don't mind.
Sure. Let's see if I can do that. Uh, um, it looks like there's an error message that the host needs to enable.
Uh, we're working on that.
Okay.
Jeff, are you um, J S?
Yes. Hi, Doris.
How are you?
Good, thank you.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay, now we see it.
Great.
That's, that's great.
Great, so um, twenty-three Bridge Street is currently comprised of uh, two structures. One, as I understand it, is um, has been deemed historical, which is this corner property right here. And then there are two other um, structures also on the property. Um, this outline would be um, the proposed new footprint of the building that would house the laundromat um, with a second floor above it. Um, of, which we haven't really determined uh on, on what would the upstairs uh comprise of. But this is really, 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 uh, and I emphasize preliminary um visuals of what that might look like. We um, tried to utilize some of the existing aesthetics um, from the nearby buildings. Um, the board and batten and and some of the darker um tones, mainly from eleven Bridge Street, which is around the corner. But um, my hope today was to um introduce myself and concept and get any sort of feedback um, from the board as to how this might um be received and, and what we could consider um to have this accomplished.
Right, thanks, thanks. Well, thank you for coming in. I I always appreciate people coming in and sort of floating their ideas. Um, um, I, there's, there's a couple of things that float in my mind. Um, and that, um, and we can, I guess I can start unless someone else wants to. Uh, A, it's, 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 it's a use, it's a change of use. Um, and it's not permitted use for a, for a, a laundromats in that zone, which is the office district. So that's, that's an uphill climb right there. Um, so that's something to consider.
It's a prohibited use.
It's a prohibited use.
So the, the dry cleaning establishment or laundromat is prohibited in the office district under this property laws.
Right.
Okay.
So that's.
Not a change use, it's a prohibited use.
Thank, yeah, 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 good point, good point.
You would need to go to the zoning board appeals to get a use variance.
Right. Right, and that's, that, yeah.
So that is something uh I am aware of, and I had um, not wanting to jump to any conclusions, but would have assumed that that was in place to prohibit any additional laundromats for some of the reasons, like for one of the obvious reasons of not wanting to um, to um, put a, a uh, additional demand on, on the, on the sewer system. So my hope was that in applying for the relocation of, of the existing um, laundrette, it might be looked at a little bit differently than one who's potentially trying to create an additional one.
Um, well, you mentioned the sewer system. It's, it's not on the sewage treatment plant. Um, so it's, it's uh, the, the present laundromat is on the sewage treatment plant. The uh, the proposed location is not, and um, and that's I just happen to know it's a problematic area in terms of drainage um, and and all that. Um, so there, there, there are proposals to extend the sewage treatment plant um, to reach out that direction, but it has not been done yet, obviously. Um, so that's going to be a significant issue as well. Um, so whether or not your, your idea, your, your theory about why wasn't, it's a prohibited use, it, it might be, I don't, I don't know. But um, for that reason, but um, the fact is that sewage, sewage is an issue. Um, so those are the two biggest ones that that stick out to me. I don't know if anyone else has other thoughts about that.
No, those are, those are mine.
Yeah.
Well, that they, that the first main problem is that the sewage system doesn't uh doesn't go into that, that region with uh, have a laundromat that's not on a sewage treatment plant system. It's uh virtually impossible because you'd have to laundromat in subject. Uh, and then also it's just, you know, the, the use table being prohibited for that zone. So in that case, you'd have to go to zoning to get, get that approval um, change. But on the other side, you would have to wait till the sewage system was in place in that zone to even consider putting a laundromat there.
Right, right.
Uh, the proposal, there's a proposal before us right now, which bring would if it was realized, bring the sewage line down Bridge Street toward this, but not all the way there.
Um, but I think you're talking about eleven Bridge.
Yes.
Um, it, potentially, uh, eleven Bridge already is served by the sewage treatment plant.
It is, that's right.
Uh, the Dodson Needer Building, what we call Dodson Needer Building. Um, and that, it's further north from this location. Um, so it's not, it's not that far. Um, but it's, it's, it's an issue. It's a, it's a, it's one of the hurdles to, to jump over. Any other thoughts?
I, I think if it were me, I would probably, probably bring this to the trustees' level for discussion on these, on these issues. Um, and get a little more clarity on the issue with the sewage extension, if anything, to this area and the, the use.
Uh, or speak to a zoning attorney.
Or speak to a zoning attorney.
Yeah, I don't know if you could hear our, our, our attorneys saying, speak to a zoning attorney. Um, um, good, good. Look, I'm, I'm glad you came in. It's, it's, it's an interesting idea. You've, you've got a couple, a couple of big hurdles there, but um, um, maybe you can figure that out.
Is there any, um, can you give me any um, sort of sentiment on, on what, um, if this were to be a two-story structure? What the upstairs could um, could provide for? I mean, I realize it's in the office district, so I assume offices. Um, would, would current um, table, would the current uses, allowable uses permit me to do any apartments, two, like two apartments up there?
I don't know. Kathy, have thoughts about that?
Uh, it, it would be a part of the permitted, it's special exception use for an apartment building in the office district. Um, and actually, if they're affordable units, then they don't have an area per area uh requirement per apartment, uh, but you would need to meet the parking requirements for.
Right, that's, he's got some space for parking on there. So uh, could you, could you hear Kathy just then?
Yes.
Um, yeah, that, um, uh, her point's a good one. If it's affordable, if it's, if they're affordable apartments, um, that you have more leeway in terms of how big and what you need to do um, in that, in that district.
Got it. Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for coming in. By Zoom. Take care. Um, all right. And then lastly, not on the agenda, but we want to talk about, because it came in, uh. Um, George, I guess it's an emergency that's happening over at the library, uh, but Tiffany, what's happening?
Okay, apologies, because I'm going to read from my phone. I was, I received a call today and I sent everything directly over to you. But I was um, from the Kelly Paris, who is the executive director of the John Jermaine Flatiron. Um, they've been working for some period of time, and I'm sorry, I'm reading from a mic on the phone.
That's okay.
She sent me notes because she was unable to be here this, this evening. Um, they've been working, they did have a oh my goodness. They have a geothermal heating and air conditioning system. It has failed a number of times. They have dug a number of wells. They're on their third well now. They can't get to work. So basically, the system has failed. Um, and they're in dire need of having to change that, hopefully, and get that approved through proper channels before it really becomes a situation there. Um, I did send some photographs as well as some plans. They did not have a survey done yet. Um, so I'll be working with them in making sure that that gets done as well. Um, but they have decided to let, let the geothermal system go. Uh, they're unable to find clean water to, to help it run properly. They've had a number. PW Grocer did an extensive feasibility study there, and as I said, they've dug a couple of other wells. It just doesn't work, it's all work. Um, and so at this point, they are going to go ahead with a traditional HVAC system. Um, I, I don't know if anyone can share their photographs or plans, because they actually had some renderings already done.
Yeah, Tiffany, the only thing that you signed, we don't, we should photographs, that's all.
No, it's all within the parts of plans.
Two pictures of the outside.
It's in a straight block or a block.
Oh, I see, right.
No, that's just, yeah, the.
Is that a temporary thing that you're showing us? The, the, the picture, the, the drawing, the picture, the image? That's a permanent thing?
That would be changed. That is the only, they have, like I said, they, this meeting this up fixed ways to sign and try to grab how there's going to put, are those, I don't know what it is that you're looking at.
This is what we got.
Is that what it is?
Picture.
Send over?
Two, two, no, one, four, I know, yeah, yeah.
I, I see the length, but I don't have access.
Okay. Um, those are the actual plans for the HVAC system, so it would be on, on the CAD. Um, and at this point, I'll do an evaluation with them of the site to make sure that there's no other possible location for it. But I'm assuming they've already done that with their fire crafters.
Okay.
Is there, is there a reason why we can't put it on the news, it's a new addition?
I, I will find out. I'll find out.
But this is like right in front of the.
I know.
Yeah.
Um, we can't get down on the, on the screen for.
I, I.
We could handle that. I, I think she has what decently, I have to take my. Thank you, thank you, Tiffany.
You know, I think in an effort to be very good neighbors, we've decided to go with a geothermal system, however.
Oh, there you go.
That's why we.
The salt water is prohibiting it.
It's something that can try here in the police department that if we're married, this does not work in this area, for whatever reason. Um, I don't know if that additionally is able to hold that technically for that type of system, that size building.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll be sure to find that out, but I wanted you all to be in the loop and not be out of the loop knowing that we're coming, you know, we're having to move forward in this direction. I don't think they particularly wanted to move forward in this direction. They've done everything they can to not do this. Um, but I think this is the last resort.
And I know, I know it's, it could be costly, but could they vault it? Could they put it in the zone?
I can ask them that as well.
That's how it's done in the city, the conditions, it gets a.
Goes with that. Yeah.
I mean, it's just a grill on top, obviously.
Right, right.
So, or at least partially underground or something, I, I, I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
It's, it is, it appears to be quite a large unit.
And there's a house in the south as well, right?
There is, yeah. It's too bad Mrs. Mark Hoover isn't there anymore and I wouldn't have to worry about that. Um, that's been an issue. Um, so I, like I said, I just wanted to bring you into the loop as early as possible so that we, you know, are all aware that this is coming down the pike. I'm going to work with them. I, I received a call, a pretty desperate call, although they've gotten this far with it, um, before they let us know.
Right.
They had to move forward with it.
Okay. Well, thank you for bringing your attention. Obviously, that has to go through all the different, you know, boards and things.
So I'm very happy to have to do that. Um, I would pro, I will probably ask for you to consider waiting for a site plan review on it, only to the extent that it is something that doesn't require any additional sewage or any additional parking or anything like that. Um, you know, we are going to have to appear in front of the ARB.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm sure as we talk about vaulting and, and doing all of those things to try to, you know, place it in a, in a, the best spot it could possibly be placed. I'm sure that they will be very integral part of that discussion as well.
Right, right, okay. Um, straight up, thank, thank you enough. I think that brings us to the end of our agenda. Any, any other items that I've missed or any, any questions for you, from your folks here? If not, then I would uh, accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Grania.
Sorry.
Ron, thank you. All those in favor?
Hi.
Bye. Bye.
Turned, and we'll see you, the next meeting is when, Doris? April? Twenty-three, April twenty-three. See you all then. Okay. Thank you. Bye, Barbara.